Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city council meeting for July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three here at City Hall in North Bend. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Elwood and Rosen, your honor.
Very much. Your God help, would you lead us in the? Exalute. Thank you very much for that. I see we've got a nice group of folks here visiting us in the audience. Help me how many we have online, but it looks like we might have zero so far. Okay, consent agenda. First item on tonight's meeting is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Godell, second by Ms. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She can carries and it is unanimous. That moves us right up to citizen comments. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, this is your time to address council. If you are here in chambers, you'll come to the podium, starting with name, address, or the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Those that are online, if you indicate in the chat box, we will then call upon you. We'll start here in chambers. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Hello, Deborah Landers, one four six one five, four hundred and thirty-eighth Avenue Southeast. So I'm here representing North Bend Art and Industry. I want to first of all thank those of you that were able to join us for our open house and ribbon cutting. It was super fun and we had a really good showing. It was, it was awesome. Second, I wanted to talk to you about a new event in the Snoqualmie Valley. September twenty-third, please mark your calendars. It's Art Off the Rails. It's a collaborative event with the Snoqualmie Art Commission, the Northwest Railway Museum and North Bend Art and Industry. We're going to have mirror events at the two depot parks. At each of the depot parks, we'll have fifteen to twenty artist booths. We'll have music. We'll have food trucks. We'll have community art project, which I want to tell you more about because it's going to be cool. And again, to my knowledge, I've been here in the valley about thirty-five years. I've never seen an actual art festival on this part of the valley, so I'm super excited to be part of this. Hear more about it. It's coming, coming very soon with flyers and promotions and it's going to be out there. And that's first topic. Second topic is, as you know, we are new tenants at two oh nine Main Avenue South. We're pretty excited to have our space and because our understanding is that the city is really wanting to utilize that area by Ace Hardware, by Meadowbrook, Urgent Care, kind of that, by Bartels. And we face the trail, the River Park Trail. I'm, I'm here to ask for some help to keep that trail area groomed. Because it doesn't get mowed, at least to my knowledge, it doesn't get mowed, although I did mow it, sorry. Because it doesn't get mowed, it becomes a, a, a dropping place for a lot of litter, for syringes, for cigarette butts, not a really pedestrian or bicycle friendly environment. So I'm asking for some help to get it on the regular mowing schedule, even if it's monthly. It's not like it's irrigated, so it's not going to take a lot of maintenance. But I think even just by making that first attempt at keeping it somewhat groomed, it will help to keep some of the litter control down and help us keep it nice because my next thing that I want to talk to you about at the next meeting is an art installation for that area. So with that, thank you so much, Dwight. Is, are there any questions?
You did. Sure, Mark made a note.
Good evening. My name's Anita Young. I have been born and raised here. My address is two four three East Second Street, North Bend, Washington. Always lived in the city limits. Please forgive me, I'm not really good on public speaking. As you know, I've reached out to all of you in the last month. Thank you for giving me your time. I have worked, some of you may know me, I've worked at Tweeds Cafe for the last twenty-seven years. I am still there two days a week. Five years ago, I decided to open my own business. I opened North Bend, or excuse me, Twin Peaks Pub in North Bend between Twin Weeds and the bakery. After a year and a half years of being open, COVID hit, I was basically closed down for a year. I have since been trying to come up with activities for the North Bend community. Some of these activities are, I do pub crawls and we donate the money to Kids Cancer. Last year, prior year was to Humane Society. These activities now that I am doing have been, people come in, they play Darrell Rummy, they play cribbage, they play poker tournaments, they play hearts, spades, and all of that. At these events, the only money I make from these events is revenue from people buying food and beverages. I provide no money. I give out my venue free of cost. No money made at all. In your ordinance, nine dot eleven dot five dot zero two zero prohibits small casinos and card rooms, which this is not. This is a social card game. I opened my bar for all the locals and others to have a place to come, socialize, enjoy themselves, and have a safe place to relax, which has happened. Just had the block party last Saturday. You could come in during the day, you'd come in during the night. There were so many locals there. They were just happy to have something to do in North Bend. It's North Bend. I've lived here all my life. I know most of them. I'm like, come on in. I got anywhere from twenty-one-year-olds to eighty-year-olds that just come in, socialize, they have a great time. My problem being is the gambling commission requires an unhoused, means I do not bank any money, social card game license to have events like these, meaning I cannot right now let anybody come in and play cribbage in my bar with two eighty-year-old men due to the fact that I have a pull tab license, which is through the gambling commission. The applications of this type of license by the gambling commission requires a signature by a representative of the city acknowledging this license. I have spoke with administration. I've sent out emails. I was told by the city administrator, the city in North Bend does not mind that I do this, and they do not govern it. I get that. The gambling commission does care. It's a seventy-dollar license. It's called social card games.
I understand. I just need you to make a summary statement. I know you've got a lot to share. You can submit it to the clerk, though. You've expired time.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Summary statement, and if you want to turn in your notes to the clerk, that'll get circulated to all of the, so.
Perfect.
Thanks, yeah.
Evening. Uh, mine, uh, my uh, my three, oh, I guess Trevor LaFever. Uh, my address is three two one Southeast Orchard Drive, number nineteen. Uh, similar to Anita's, uh, I don't want to take up much of your time. Many of the specifics are detailed in the letter that Anita and I sent to the council. Um, for me, I've always loved card games, board games, you name it, my favorite being poker. I've always loved the skill and simplicity of the game. If you can believe it, I'm not a big gambler. Unfortunately, none of my friends growing up through college ever wanted to play. When the casino was announced in Snoqualmie, I was excited for the chance to play a few times a year. I came home to visit my parents, still live up by Rattlesnake Lake. I always enjoyed this Snoqualmie Casino's card room because it was inviting, it was friendly, and unlike commercial card rooms in surrounding areas, felt a little grimy and dubious. Uh, it was, it was one of the things I looked forward to. My girlfriend and I bought a home behind Si View last year. Unfortunately, as you may or may not know, casino has stopped supporting poker, which was one of the driving factors in which I wanted to create a card league. Wanted to create something fun and welcoming for the local community, tailoring the experiences to beginners and experienced players alike, a positive setting. I do not make a penny from putting this league on. All the equipment, such as chips, tables, softwares, et cetera, I paid out of pocket for. Biggest challenge was finding a venue large enough to host multi-table tournaments on a regular cadence. Any of the venues I investigated wanted to charge rental fees, and that I can't afford to pay out of pocket for, and I'm unable to charge fees for. There also aren't many options, if any, outside of the city limits, host these tournaments. I almost gave up on this whole idea because I couldn't find a venue that made sense. Several months ago, I was actually showing a friend around the community, and we stumbled into Twin Peaks Pub. Anita and I recognized each other since her daughter and I went to high school, both graduating in two thousand and nine. Anyway, Anita and I started chatting, and I mentioned wanting to start a regular tournament. She loved the idea. Which brings us here. We aren't asking for a repeal of the ordinance. We don't want a commercial card room in the community offering all hours gambling and bringing in riffraff. All we are asking for is an exception to the ordinance so we can obtain a social card game license with the state gambling commission, so that we can host semi-regular tournaments in Anita's venue. I've attempted to look at this request, various perspective and lenses. I do not see how this specific case hurts the community, surrounding business. Anything, it promotes community, local business. Appreciate your time. Any questions?
My name is Christopher Ramsey. I live at four two one two eight Southeast Hundred Sixty-Eighth Street. Been in the valley about fifteen years. I've watched what Anita did, and start to beginning. I don't play the tournament, so I like to play hearts and spades. I think we gotta remember what North Bend is, was turning into, and that shows a sense of community have that place. I don't have a group of friends, but to have that place to go to, that's not about gambling, it's about the social network comes into involved with this. I don't, I like to, um, keep that alive, and I like to support Anita's business, you know, from where she started and to where she's at, and I think any kind of restrictions is kind of taken away from what downtown used to be. From the poorhouse to the sureshot, I think that this, these little social events is important to the community, and I think there should be acceptance that seventy-dollar, well, that's all I have. I don't have a big long speech, but I'm here to support the downtown community, what it has to offer to everybody new in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So can you speak at this time here in city chambers? Have anyone online?
No one online.
Okay, thank you very much. That will move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Very pleased, say, we have a presentation tonight called the Vision Two Thousand and Fifty Award. Mr. Josh Brown, Executive Director of PSRC, is here with us this evening. Josh, right over to you.
For the city council, city staff, and members of the public, I'm Josh Brown, the Executive Director for the Pigeon Sound Regional Council. Good evening. You know, when you see outside, as you do today on a sunny day, it's a little hard to say good evening when it's so beautiful out on a summer day in Western Washington, really great. I always love being able to come up and, and visiting your community. I'm really proud of a lot of our partnership over the years. PSRC's helped to provide transportation grants to your community. We're closely with your city staff, as you've navigated the thorough ness of, of developing your, your conference of plans. And Mayor McCarland, I just appreciate your constant involvement in our agency and the time that you give us. I'm here today, though, not, uh, to talk about lane use and GMA, and unfortunately, Mayor, I didn't bring my checkbook. We don't have a transportation grant to deliver today, but I know there's always one in the future. There's always another funding competition around the corner. As you mentioned, I'm here to present your community with the Vision Two Thousand and Fifty Award. So what is a Vision Two Thousand and Fifty Award? Well, it's our way at PSRC of recognizing our membership and partners are helping to implement our regional plans. So you know, PSRC is a regional planning agency for King, it's at Pierce and St. Hummish Counties. We're very much at the high level. What are the big things that we need to try to get right in, in, in our region, in, in our communities? The implementers, the folks that are getting things done on, on, on the ground, are our cities, our towns, our counties, transit agencies, and other partners. So we created the Vision Two Thousand and Fifty Awards to really recognize those efforts, and we have different categories of the Vision Two Thousand and Fifty Awards. Uh, the, um, the, the reason why I'm here today is to recognize our working together category for the Vision Two Thousand and Fifty, and specifically to recognize the Snoqualmie Valley Transportation. So Mayor, I know you and I've had a number of conversations, and I remember your predecessor and I had a number of conversations of the challenges, and these like yours here in the valley, people have proper transit for those who need to be able to get to, uh, i- important vital services. So Snoqualmie Valley Transportation advances Vision Two Thousand and Fifty by providing mobility here in the valley, leading to residents who may need additional assistance. You're providing excellent transit service with door-to-door and fixed route options, building on services provided by the Mount Si Senior Center. We're really impressed with your efforts, and I know this has very much been, um, a, a strong collaboration between the City of North Bend, the city of Snoqualmie, my Mount Si Senior Center. So congratulations, you're an inspiration to the entire region, and I think you're, you're going about providing transit service in a unique, flexible way at, and thinking outside the box in a manner that, that we need to be able to serve residents of our entire diverse region. Congratulations.
You want to?
I feel like your staff probably wants a, sure.
Yes.
I don't know who your camera person is, but. And Mayor, I don't think we have anybody from Snoqualmie here.
Oh, Mayor.
Please come on.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to serve citizens, residents of Snoqualmie Valley. I hope we can do it for a long time to come.
And Josh, you took me by surprise. I was, I, I knew we were going to be presenting to Amy. I didn't realize that the city was receiving it as well. And so, thank you very much for that. Much appreciate your visits. We are overdue for our annual drive around the city. Do bring your checkbook for that. This won't get you off the hook. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Amy, you're, you and your organization are amazing to the valley, and, uh, we want to make sure that you're always aware of that. Uh, the, the transportation service is fundamental to getting folks around the community and know how hard you fight for it. Thank you so much. Right. With, with, with that, that took me a little by surprise, I do have to admit, sorry. Um, we'll move on to commission and committee reports, and we will start with, uh, community and economic development. Ms. Miller?
Mr. Mayor, uh, let's see, CED met today, uh, the eighteenth of July, at about three thirty this afternoon. We had two items on our agenda. We started off with the fiscal sustainability study presentation by FCS Group led by Todd Chase. Uh, we talked about citywide economic development strategy, strategy, and it led to, um, fuller conversation. Ultimately, we'll be seeing this come back to us on council, so be, get ready for that in the future. Uh, secondly, we talked about the resolution to this, to suspend pocket process for two thousand and twenty-four. So that's what we did today, and we will be next meeting on August fifteenth. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Scott Hough, Finance and Administration.
Finance Administration met July eleventh at, uh, four PM at the City Hall adjournment room. We had a browsing conversation about our park impact fees and where we are, kind of what we've expended, what we still have in parking. Fun conversation. We had an update on the finance department and how they're working through, uh, on having a finance director at this. Um, and then we discussed the, uh, a little bit about the fiscal sustainability study that we talked at CED about. We did, and it's administration.
You, I, I hope the conclusion of the park impact fee was it's healthy.
It was. It was very healthy. I, do you want me to move on to the next one, since Mr. Rosen?
Over that for Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, that, that's a really hard one to do. It's gonna be a long one. Our meeting for July was canceled. Our next meeting is August first, uh, at four PM at the City Hall adjournment room.
Thank you for carrying that weight.
That was really rough.
That was, that was a tough one. Mr. Loudback, Transportation and Public Works.
Thank you, your honor. We didn't cancel last meeting. We, uh, we met on June twenty-seventh, four PM, the adjournment room. Uh, there were, uh, several items on the agenda, one of which we're going to be addressing a little bit later this evening. Uh, Mr. Tucker, uh, introduced a resolution accepting Bill's sale for Castaway Canyon subdivision. Regos had a motion approving, uh, engineering services with GNO for the Boxley Creek intertie with Salaw, moving forward on that very important project. Regos also had, uh, a motion improving professional contract services with SAM companies for surveying, mostly transportation and private development, which will be pass-through funds. And then we had some good news. Uh, Mr. Moore and Mr. Marsinko, uh, told us about the North Bend Way paving overlay project being administered by King County with TIB funds. Uh, we were successful in, uh, obtaining another grant, and the, uh, it came in twenty percent less than the engineers' estimates, so we have a fantastic new overlay project coming to town, and it's not going to cost us nearly as much as what we had assumed. Other items on the agenda? Was a change order for the, uh, covered parking area at Public Works, and also a summary of the Ballarat Second Street Intersection Evaluation, uh, talking about potential, uh, street signage. Uh, we, uh, doubt that it didn't meet the criteria for adding any additional stop signs or anything else, but we will still keep an eye on it moving forward. That was it, your honor. Uh, like I said, we have one item that's going to be on the agenda later this evening, and our next meeting will be, uh, on the twenty-fifth next week at four PM in the adjournment room.
You, sir. Pro Tem Colin.
Mayor Rob, uh, we had a city council work study on June twenty-seventh at seven PM via hybrid or city hall or Zoom. This meeting was about keeping elected officials and city committees educated on the open public meeting rules. Topics included general roles, council member responsibilities, RCW forty-two point three zero point zero one zero legislative declaration, meeting guidelines, social media, open government overviews, and general principles, subcommittee meetings, case law examples, executive sessions, penalties, ethics refresher, training requirements, and resources. And that sounds quite dull, but it was actually very interesting. And our next meeting will be on July twenty-fifth.
You. Scott Hough, back to you for Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Thank you. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met on, uh, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at four PM at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. Um, on our agenda on that day was approving the contract services with Mercer Island. Um, so Mercer Island as of, uh, January will become one of our contract agencies going forward, so that environment. Had a conversation with the mayor about a week before, and he was excited to become part of the Eastside Fire and Rescue family. We discussed the fire chief's mid-year evaluation. Uh, we had a conversation about our standards of covers and update. Um, we have not met some of those numbers due to some changes, things that happened in COVID, and we have redirected the agency to support, trying to look at how we get back turnout numbers and hitting those numbers. So that was a pretty good conversation and important for our public table. Oh, at the fire chief's briefing, uh, he flamed, let us know that on June twenty-eighth, Duvall Fire Commissioners voted to go on, uh, to further negotiate a contract with Redmond Fire. They're currently negotiating with Redmond Fire. Um, there was a discussion about PFAS, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and City of this, uh, um, continue to collaborate with Washington Department of Caligula and agreed on an order of tenant agreement on those mitigation timeline for PFAS on our property, their properties. Um, our arbitration was completed. Uh, the final day was June twenty-sixth. Uh, this process will move on to the next phase, which includes respective legal councils, uh, construction of a final legal brief, uh, once completed, both briefs will be submitted to the arbitrator on the same day. Um, it was also noted that, uh, which is important for a mid-year biennium update, that the CPIW came out four point five percent. Um, all of our budgets were based on a pretty close, so that's really good to hear. Um, logistics, the kitchen remodel at Station Thirty-Five will start Monday, July seventeenth. Station Thirty-Three remodel is in design phase. Construction Station Eighty-Two will also begin Monday, July seventeen, and the crews have settled into their new apartment at the Knowles, and they're building that. Uh, work continues at the headquarters to, uh, move on to the new PCern radios, which are being rolled out. We happen to be the, uh, central location, and so is a co-op lease, and some other agencies do come in and pick up their PCern device. Um, thing to note is, I want everybody recommend, or you're all invited to celebrate Woodinville Pan, eat breakfast on Sunday, August twelfth, eight PM, Station Thirty-One. On, uh, June twenty-seventh, we had four new recruits graduate from the South King, uh, Training Consortium, uh, Academy sixteen. So we added, uh, four additional recruits to our. Um, we also discussed, uh, an event that Mayor and I got to go to on Monday, or the push-in ceremony to honor, uh, the new aid truck donated by the tribe. Um, this is, the re, the whole, um, history of, of, uh, pushing went back to the horse drawn when you had these things that you push back in necessarily. So it's something we brought back to, to celebrate in process.
The shoulder's still sore.
I'm sure. It was really rough, especially with the engine moving it there. Um, but if you get a chance, um, go over there, see it. It's got a unique design that was designed by one of, uh, the local, uh, people from the tribe that designed the outside, young lady who was studying, um, graphics design and had just graduated, so it was nice for her to come out and show what she's doing. Um, he also talked about our, uh, July fourth response. Um, East Sci-Fi and Rescue responded to fifty-six calls for service in total on Ja- July twenty-fourth. No fireworks-related injuries were reported, so that was good. Uh, there were, uh, seven, eleven brush fires, seven were fireworks-related, dumpster fires, one was related, um, smoke complaint with fireworks related, and the rest of stuff were not. Um, and that's all I have for you tonight.
You. Stemming Commission Reports.
And a commission last met on June twenty-seventh, joining the city council for the OPMA training. Will next meet on August second for an introduction and discussion on draft, minor updates, the shoreline element and critical areas element of the comprehensive plan. Parks Commission last met June twenty-eighth. At that meeting, the commission discussed activities as part of the city's annual recognition for Arbor Day, discussed garbage and recycling cans within the downtown area to provide a recommendation for aesthetic, functional considerations with cans under the city's new contract with Recology, and conducted the second part of the two, um, Parks Tour to discuss potential capital improvement, identify maintenance needs, and prepare recommendations. Our mission is not meeting in July. Their next meeting will be August twenty-third. The June Economic Development Commission meeting was held Tuesday, June twenty-seventh. Mission reviewed and provided feedback on an initial outline for the updated Mission reviewed and provided feedback on an initial outline for the updated economic development element of the comprehensive plan. Mission discussed how strategies from the action plan will be incorporated into the element. The July Economic Development Commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, July twenty fifth. The commission will review and provide feedback on a working draft of that element.
You. Regional committees. Just on back none.
Town City Association Board of Health. I gave a report on that. Our last meeting, the next meeting will be held Thursday, July twentieth at one o'clock via Zoom.
You. How Sunday I think.
The Snow Colley Valley Watershed Forum will be meeting tomorrow at the Salish Lodge.
We're not gonna wait. Sorry. Ms. Miller. Hello. I've just got just a couple of comments. S R C Executive Board. Mr. Brown was here a little while ago. We could have got him to comment on this, but it last met several weeks ago while I was on vacation, so I did not attend. It was routine business. The next meeting of P S R C is July twenty seventh. And we'll be looking again at land use actions. S V G A was held here at City Hall at the end of May. It was a great evening. A lot of representatives from from Valley Cities. And I would say in addition to reports from all of the Valley Cities on activities in in the cities and things going on this summer. We then had a inner interaction, interactive session with representatives from state legislature, specifically Senator Hawkins, the twelfth, and Representative Ramos from the fifth fielding questions on legislative actions that had asked in the recent session finishing. And we had a lot of discussion around land use and some of the new laws passed that affect our local cities. There's a lot of feedback. In County Flood District Control District met July fourteenth, reviewed minutes in the March twenty ninth organizational year opening meeting, received the executive director's report and an overview of the preliminary budget. We will be next meet on August seventeenth. Pick up that budget. Is all for the my regional reports. With that, we'll move to introductions. Item number ten on the agenda is A B twenty three dash zero eight five. This is a motion authorizing a lease with Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Mr. Regos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Page sixty one in your packet. This is a lease agreement with Department of Fish and Wildlife for our former community and economic development building. Many of us have fond memories of because we used to staff that facility, and it's been used as a satellite office for Snow Call Me Police, Snow Call Me North End Police Department the last few years and previous year, Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife started leasing it. They requested another year, so a time extension to the lease and twice as much area of that facility. So this would be revenue generating for the city. We use the appraisal performed approximately one year ago. I'm in the cost. One year contract, like I said, it's just just double the size of the lease cost. And the city doesn't have any other plans at this point for the C E D billing, so this one actually went through Finance and Administrative Committee, not P B W Committee, so staff recommend approval.
You. Anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this? And the bill. No one in chambers. Do we have anyone online?
One online.
Online. You you mentioned this came through.
Finance Administrative.
Right. Would be you, Mr. God, help, I believe.
Me to make a motion? Is that why you're looking?
Make a motion.
Okay, sure. Motion to approve A B twenty three dash oh eight five authorizing the mayor to sign Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife for partial use of former C E D annex for forming contact invited city attorney.
Second.
Thank you for the second. I think the motion's almost longer than the discussion. Oh, you made the motion. Do you have anything to add to the report?
It came through Finance Committee. We looked at it. I think it's a great opportunity. There was some increase in it. It's an opportunity to pay for some of the stuff, and we're limited in what we can do with that thing, so we recommend that it does pass. Good thing for that.
I'll say anything, Dan. Anyone else? A motion before you is to approve A B twenty three dash zero eight five authorizing the mayor to sign a Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Partial use of former C E D annex building and a form and content approved by the city attorney. On favor.
Hi.
Opposed. She carries it is unanimous. Thank you very much, Council. Item number eleven on your agenda is A B twenty three dash zero eight six. Motion authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper. Mr. Regos comes back to you again.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Page seventy seven in your packet. This is about the purchase of a street sweeper. I believe this to be more of a need than than just simply a want at this point. The street sweepers twenty four years old, our current one at the finding replacement parts is very difficult, and it frankly, just doesn't work that well. We've added to the streets in the city in the past several years. It's our it's our fleet's number one need at this point, based on multiple conversations with myself and staff. Heaviest use of this street sweeper is typically in the fall, which is coming up, but this will take six to nine months to procure once it's ordered. So we would expect to receive it probably in the springtime is my guess. Cost of this, just it's a tough pill to swallow at four hundred thousand dollars. I holy smokes, I guess I should have talked to the tribe to see if they donate a street sweeper because they did it for the the aid truck, aid car, but not we didn't ask them. So anyways, this is something we definitely need, and I did look at the price of new vehicles, and we all know that ration is a serious thing, the price of new vehicles. Putting trucks has gone up twenty five percent in the last three years, so this street sweeper would have costed two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. It's three years ago, and now it's slightly over four hundred thousand dollars. So we aim this through the D E S contract. That's Washington State Department of Enterprise Services, so they have already negotiated the lowest price of this vehicle. So we're safe from that standpoint. You don't have to negotiate this vehicle. We looked at the option of leasing equipment from different provider and cost would have broke even in about a couple of years, so it makes more sense to purchase street sweeper because we expect to get ten years of use out of it at least. So staff recommend this move forward when we purchase the street sweeper.
You. I'm so call. Clarifying questions before I move to public comment.
Yes. If this is moved forward, do you anticipate a naming contest?
Good one.
Now, we will certainly do that if this is approved.
Oh, that's that.
It's really just a clarifying comment. I've got to make it clear. I did not donate it. It was a grant through the trial.
That is clarifying. Thank you for that. My only question is, it doesn't happen to be an electric vehicle.
It's not. Those are even more expensive, and the lead time is even longer, unfortunately.
That's why we didn't ask for it. This time, if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, if you're here in council chambers, you can come to the podium. That's the way we roll here. You gotta you gotta start with. Oh, name for Ramsey. Yeah. Four two one two eight Southeast Hundred Sixty Eighth Street. Is a tribe wanting to take any portion of the cost? Because you said that they was going to.
No, sir. It was an offhand comment.
Okay, sorry. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Loudon back.
Thank you, your honor. And I'm intrigued by the concept of a naming contest and possibly corporate sponsorship, since the size of this thing is immense. There's going to be mobile advertising capabilities to offset some of the costs. We can talk about that later. Motion to motion to approve A B twenty three dash oh eight six authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper the Washington State D E S contract and authorizing the mayor to execute any applicable contracts in form and content acceptable, the city attorney in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and four cents plus sales tax.
Have a second.
Second.
And a second for Ms. Miller. Thing to add, Mr. Lumbek.
I I think Mark covered it. The street sweeper that we currently have, I'm hoping is going to make it through the next six to nine months before we get the delivery. It's 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 been a miracle work by our maintenance staff to keep everything running. And I'm looking forward to having a new efficient piece of equipment that can go out there and help keep the streets of North Bend's clean. I would recommend to do pass.
Ms. Miller.
I'm with Ross on this, of course. I'm very excited that we go forward this direction for many reasons. The price point is something to choke down. It's a rough one for sure, but to keep our streets as safe and as clean as possible is first and foremost on the top of my list, and I'm excited about it. But I do like what Ross said about the corporate sponsor entity. I think that's very clever, and I want to discuss that at some point, too. Or, you know, and going in the future. We should have a lot of excitement through this. You.
Think we're going to marry this up with the arts and industry presentation earlier. Anyone else? Being known, the motion before you is to approve A B twenty three dash zero eight six authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper through the Washington State D E S contract and authorizing the mayor to execute any applicable contracts in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in amount not to exceed four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and four cents plus sales tax. On favor.
Hi.
Me opposed. She carries it is unanimous. Thank you for that one as well. That is a tough one to swallow. I think amateurized out over the years doing okay. And I like the like this new trend line for naming contests. Good thing. We'll move on to mayor, council, and administrator concerns and initiatives. Start with Mr. God help.
I don't know. That's good. Really, I just don't have a lot to say. Just everybody begin to enjoy as we end up July and everybody starts thinking about back to school and probably enjoying all your kids that are home or in college, and as the middle of August hits, they start heading back to college. So all I want to say is enjoy the weather, enjoy the amenities of North Bend and safe trip for everybody going back to school in August.
Thank you. Smiling.
Well, we kicked off the block party this past Saturday, and of course, I made my for me. Oh, no, this is fine. And I was excited to be a participant and just be there running around, doing what I love to do. And eventually getting up on top of the McGrath Building to collect some images that are not only fun, but engage the public, as I always love to do that. And to some extent, they are historic. Despite all that, Mayor Rob and I traded time on the stage of C and the Genie Tarex stage, which was really well put together. I was impressed by that. And we did the commentary for the afternoon and the evening. Also, I want to thank City of North Bend. You you guys rocked it. You you guys just crazy good. And everybody was smiling and having a wonderful time. It really had great energy, even though the heat was definitely you know, hitting the pavement and sweltering at points. Everybody had a great time. So thank you, Mark. Thank you. Becca, thank you, Rob. Thank you. Heather was there. And Ross was down there. Whoops, Bree, you're a sensation. And Aaron and Dawn and Alan, I saw you as well. Hope everybody had a great time. The vendors I spoke to seem to be having a very successful day. Music was also a big hit. And the restaurants were all overflowing, so I think it was a spirit of it all. It was a great way to charge into a summer. Thank you.
You, Sir Jocelyn.
I given that the snowplow was named after Darth Grader, I will offer up Luke Streetwalker.
Thanks. Off that, Mr. Loudon back.
I I am not going to get into any sort of naming competition at this point, but I will contemplate it. Yes, there's these block party was an outstanding success. Some of us spent more time in the beer garden than others. And Mary certainly did capture that from the top of McGrath Building. Thank you very much, Mary. You did a great job announcing. I really enjoyed your commentary up there. You rocked it. You did really well. Everybody from the city that participated, you guys as always hope to make that event the success that it was, and thank you all very much. Tonight is kind of bittersweet for me. I bought a house. You do. So now I'm in debt. And unfortunately, that house is fifty feet outside the city limits. And
Need a motion for annexation?
Yeah, go ahead. You better hurry. I have two more weeks in my current rental and then into the new house. But after consulting with the attorneys and such, obviously, the best thing to do is for me to give you my two weeks' notice, and I'll be tendering my resignation. It's been a blast. I can't tell you how much this has meant to me. You guys are very special. And I'm going to miss it very much, but I still have one Transportation Public Works meeting, so I'm going to make Mark's life one more meeting. But it it has been a privilege and an honor to serve the people of North Bend. And look forward to participating from the other side, the podium. And thank you all. It's been great. That top it?
I'm frankly not sure we can continue the meeting. That's some. So way to milestone. Man, you're gonna be missed. And good and and good on you, keeping it secret enough that you could get it out there tonight without us knowing.
I told everybody else. They didn't tell you.
Oh, I knew it. I should have known it. I should have. Well, with with that, yeah, we'll move on for a moment here, but we'll come back around, I think. So we'll move.
Next meeting formally, I mean, you can't go out this way.
Well, we're not going to let him go out that way for sure, but he is being rather tricky about what he's doing, so we've got to think that through. And while I'm thinking, we'll we'll move to the mayor pro town and see if she could top that kind of news.
Mayor. Russ, that's quite shocking, and you are a wealth of knowledge, somebody I look to for advice and hopefully respond to me if I need your advice in the future. I would like to say the North Bend Block Party. Thank you to all the vendors. Thank you to our Public Works Department for their hard work on a weekend and making our town happy. Thank you to the community that showed up to this amazing event. It was a hot one. North vendors are not used to that kind of heat, so hold through. And thank you to the city staff for maintaining the North Bend tent. It's a lot of work. And then I was thinking after we talked about the aid car, thank you to the Snow Cobbing Tribe for donating that aid car. Really generous and important, so thank you, Snow Call Me Truck.
You. I can get back on the saddle here. We already had one I was going to announce tonight, which is congratulations to Community and Economic Development Office and Permit Coordinator Tom Marr, who will be retiring from the city after seventeen years of service. Has been a wealth of knowledge and an invaluable part of our team, and it's not easy to say goodbye to him. But I am wishing him very well as I as I did in his retirement and the full good health and lots of new experiences that go with that. I know he's pretty excited about getting it started here at the end of the month. If you don't know Tom by name, he's saying that he is the most likely person. if you don't know Tom by name, he's saying that he is the most likely person that you have encountered if you've come to City Hall to our front counter. Uh, and the years before uh, we were here in this building, if you were at the C E D building annex where where we just in the lease earlier this evening. Um, year in, year out, seen as the most customer service focused person here. So we wish him well. Uh, I'll jump on the block party bandwagon. It was fantastic sharing uh, M C duties with uh, Councilmember Miller was a lot of fun. Uh, hopefully I got enough folks directed in your direction for the uh, picture we tried to capture of the downtown uh, group looking up. Uh, the only thing I'll I'll add on, in addition to the shout out to public work staff uh, and Bree, who supposedly was not working. Um, is that this was the first year of the event that we turned it over to the North Bend Downtown Foundation. And so they did a really good job of picking up the reins and coordinating and getting that going. That was um, in part through uh, council's efforts to help secure uh, uh, the suggested funding for them, get them up and rolling. So this is the first of what I hope to lot coming there. Um, I'd want to mention Snowquame North Bend Police Department will be hosting National Night Out on Tuesday, August first four to eight P M. At the Snowquame Community Park. Public is invited to attend this family-oriented event that features a barbecue, live music and children's activities. Yes, we're already in discussions about how there'll be one here in North Bend next year. Free summer movie matinees are being held now through our August twenty-fifth at the North Bend Theater. Thank you to the Sideview Metropolitan Park District for sponsoring that event. So Quale Valley Historical Museum will be hosting a North Bend History one-on-one event on Wednesday, July nineteenth. That's oh, uh, at six thirty at the North Bend Library. Join the museum director, Kristy Lake, for an informative illustrated presentation about North Bend's interesting colorful history. Featuring historic photos and information from the museum's collection. I can tell you, having seen some of the uh, things that she has presented and shared uh, that she did here at our Citizens Academy uh, and things over the years, it's it's an amazing wealth of history. Uh, and um, and some of it goes back almost as long as Ross's on council. Finally, uh, join me for meetup with the mayor series where residents are invited to stop by, chat, ask city-related questions or important to you and connect. Uh, the next one I will be at will be at Volition Brewing on July twenty-sixth from five to six. It's election week, so remember to vote, folks. This primary election, even though there are no city uh, elections on the ballot or the primary, there are other races out there. And so please remember to return your ballot. With that, we'll entertain. Uh, or I should turn my attention, Mr. Miller, do we have anything? Administration.
I'm gonna really miss Mr. Ladenback, telling you that. You will be mad. Really have enjoyed every time we and e- every time that you're called upon and uh, you have something to say, we it's like you have button. We always listen really closely. And uh, we're gonna miss that wisdom. And we hope we'll see you around.
One little annexation away from coming back and bugging you.
Be jumping on that.
Motion to adjourn. Hunter of Ross.
Second half.
On favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.